Call the special meeting of the WPCA and the regular town council of North Branford to order at 6:35 PM. It is Tuesday, September 23rd. Please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Roll call.
Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Deputy Mayor McMillan.
Present.
Councillor Abelson.
Here.
Councillor Diamond or Councillor Goad.
Here.
Councillor Miller.
Here.
Councillor Palladino.
Here.
Okay. Next item is approval of minutes from previous meetings. Do I hear a motion to accept the August 19th, 2025 WPCA and Town Council?
Motion.
Second.
Motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councillor Diamond. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Obstand.
Opposed? Abstain. Motion passes.
I have to abstain too, I'm sorry.
Okay. So two abstentions. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 16th, 2025 special WPCA and Town Council meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Actually, I can't motion either.
Why? You were on.
No, he wasn't.
Make the motion.
Okay.
Sorry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councillor Abelson, seconded by Councillor Palladino. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain.
Abstain.
Abstain. So it was just.
Motion carries. Now into the WPCA agenda. First item is correspondence, citizen statements regarding WPCA. Seeing none, unfinished business, none, new business. Extend sewer main at 286 Branford Road to 1599 Foxen Road, section 824 referral.
Good evening. So this is because the main that's going to be connecting, connected to the Starbucks is actually going to be a town main. So we need to get the P&amp;Z 8-24 approval to extend that main through the property that we currently own at 1599 Foxen Road.
Network is going on currently, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Did they start it or do they have to wait until we do this 824 referral?
They did start it already.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's all going today.
Okay. Because I mean, I, why didn't we do this at the last meeting when we approved it so that we did it all at once?
I am not sure about that. I don't know if the planning and zoning didn't meet maybe in August or something. That's why.
I think this was on your agenda in August and then had to go to P&amp;Z for a referral and then it came.
Yeah, but it didn't. He's saying, he just stated it's going to P&amp;Z.
No, no, no. It went to P&amp;Z.
Oh.
No, no, no. Sorry. No.
Oh, okay. That's what I was wondering.
Sorry, yes, it's already back to the positive review.
Alright, so we're good to go.
Okay.
Question.
Sure.
I'm sorry. You know how I feel about this?
Yep.
Is it going through 1599?
Yes.
Or is it, so wait, they changed it? I thought it was going up Route 80 in front of 1599.
First, it's very close to 1599, but it has to go through. You cannot, you can't go under the actual highway. There's two reasons why. One, you can't disturb what's underneath there. Two, it's state property, we can't go underneath there. So it has to go right across the edge there. It's very close, it's getting done.
Is it going, well, hold on.
So.
Not to the edge, because I saw them doing this work.
Yeah.
Are they going straight across it? What are they doing?
Yep. So the site plan showed originally partially into the DOT right of way, which is down to about the bottom of the hill. So they are currently going right along the edge of the property line. So it's within the 1599 property, but it's close to the property line as we can get. So it's maybe, maybe five feet off of the property line so that you're able to work on it.
Because that's not what we approved from the plans that you brought.
Yes. The plans that were approved through P&amp;Z.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
I am so sorry about this.
No.
We approved the plans the way it was, the way you had showed it to us, that it was on, right on Route 80, very close to 1599. So now it's going to sit there and run through 1599?
No, it's not running through 1599. It's going right along the edge of the property line. So it's going.
So it's going to be in the street or on the property?
It's definitely not in the street. It was never proposed to go in the street. It was proposed to go within the hillside, but not within, not within the actual paved road area.
First.
It was within the right of way, which was about the base of the hill. It was partway up the hill, but it was always going to be within the non-paved area of the road right of way.
So then, alright, so let's get, let's take another step at this.
No.
How are they going to get to Route 22? Or is it just ending at 1599?
So, so we had a connection from 22 into the property, which was the original town, town hall.
So that's where they were digging.
Yes, correct. So they're going to be going through that right of way, because it's going to actually be a town main. So it, they're just increasing the size in that section. It was the six inches going to an eight inch, and that's going right along the property, property line.
Like I said, I apologize. It's just that you showed us drawings and it showed that it was running right on Route 80.
No, I don't believe there's ever.
I understand that it's state property.
I've never seen a plan that showed that the sewer line was ever up on Route 80.
I don't recall seeing it that way neither when I looked at it. I remember it the way he said it.
Okay.
The.
I'm just saying, because we, I mean, we have plans for 1599 and now we.
We can still do.
That's kind of, if anything, this makes it easier.
Alright, I'm done.
If there's a commercial property goes on there, you're going to need that larger main. And it's a beautiful thing. It's not touching the street, that's state property, can't touch it, lots of things underneath it, can't do it.
Okay.
And we've worked closely with the plan, town planner, to make sure that it wouldn't impact any potential development of that site.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So there's no action on our part? It just came back and?
Yeah, I don't believe so, because it was a positive review that you don't have to.
Okay. Very good.
Can I ask one more quick question?
Sure.
Now that you've gone to a bigger pipe there, the eight inch.
Yes.
So if somebody that's, say, right there on the corner or a little farther down wanted to connect and wanted to pay to connect or put up some other business down there, could they connect to it?
I'm not sure, because there's a cemetery right on the corner and then you have the funeral home.
Well, say the gas station across the street says, hey, could I jump on that and I'll pay?
I think they may already be connected, because there is already a sewer main in the street in that area. So they may very well already be connected. I'm not 100% sure, but they would have that opportunity already because the main is in the road.
Right. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. The next item is application to connect property known as 20 Fox Hill Drive to sanitary sewers.
So this property is in the White Hollow sewer area, and as you know, there can be some challenges there. It is in the primary area and it already has paid the original assessment to connect to the sanitary sewer. So this is a fairly straightforward connection of a residence to the sanitary sewer. There is capacity, and as I said, they've already paid their connection fee, so it should be all set. There is a motion connected to it as part of the application.
The motion is on page 52 of our packet.
I make a motion to approve, I make to approve, page 52's motion.
So you're moving the suggested motion in the packet? Is that what?
Yeah.
And I will second that.
Motion was, motion was made by Councillor Diamond, seconded by Councillor Miller. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Abstain? You're opposed?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Still opposed.
To the?
20 Fox Hill Road?
20 Fox Hill Road?
Isn't that the, isn't that the?
No, that's someone's house.
That's the resident's connection.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
You have, what, do you have a brain freeze?
Is there more ice cream on there?
I am sorry. I am not opposed to them. I agree.
This man needs sprinkles right now.
What is he eating on the floor?
Ice cream.
Ice cream? Fish food?
Okay. Alright. So motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's going to be.
Okay. Citizen's statements and petitions regarding WPCA. Okay, seeing none, going on to the regular town council meeting. Community events and presentations, none. So we will go to reports of committees, boards, and commissions. First one is Economic Development Commission.
Yes. The commission convened for the first time since June and discussed form-based zoning to be presented to the planning and zoning, which would allow greater density, increased lot coverage, and a more cohesive aesthetic to members, and also stress the importance of defining a clear mission and identifying one to three strategies for the strategic plan with a primary focus on business retention. Next meeting is October 6th, and I'd like to thank Jessica Del Camer for giving us update.
Okay. Great.
Nicely done.
Okay. Park and Recreation is meeting tonight. They're in their meeting right now. So we will move on to Police Commission.
The Police Commission met on September 8th. The chief notified the commission that Branford has donated a 2004 vehicle/van to the, to North Branford. It only has 13,000 miles on it, so I'm sure the police department will make good use of it. He also announced that since the 1st of July, there have been many, many seizures of ATVs. It sounds like that just continues and continues in every town, but I think that, you know, our police department works hard to help with that. We had a demonstration, a very interesting program, a community statistics program, that people in the community will be able to go on and actually see like how many fire, I mean, how many traffic stops there were. It was amazing, all the different information that will be available. I don't know when, I think soon, to the community. I think the most important thing that happened that night is that the chief announced that the department has completed its accreditation, its two or three accreditation. It's ahead of time and it's something that this town should be very proud of, of the chief and all the other officers that worked on this, to get that accreditation and to get it early. So I think that's, I think that deserves around. There was a lot of discussion at that meeting in terms of the part that's the traffic authority. The police department has received a number of requests for things such as stop signs, traffic lights, acrosswalks. Some of that, the police department in North Branford can't make that decision, they have to send that off to the state. And believe me, the state's everywhere these days. Every time I go down Route 22, you find something going on. The state, so they're probably too busy to answer some of those things. The one thing, one request that they did get was for a autism safety sign, which the commission did approve. And that's probably everything that happened.
Okay. Thank you, Murray. Fire Commission.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So they met on September 4th, and I'd like to officially welcome Chief Lennon, as he was sworn in on September 4th. I'd also like to thank Anthony Esposito for all his hard work and dedication as an interim chief for the last three years. Thank you, Anthony. For company number one, there's a fundraiser coming up, October 4th and 5th. The boot's on the ground, so they'll be here in front of the, of this building, and please donate as whatever you can. It'd be awesome. As far as company four goes, they have a retired ambulance that they actually have sold for $7,000, that, so it is gone, finally, that they approved that. And also for the month of August, the department calls, they had three fire calls, 165 emergency medical calls, eight motor vehicle accidents, four hazardous conditions, 15 public service and good intent calls, six residential fire alarms, 51 commercial fire alarms, and eight mutual aid calls. So there's a total of 214 calls, and the total number of calls for 2025 are 1,520. So please thank your fire department for all their hard work, because it is strictly volunteer. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So Anthony, I think I know the answer to this question, but basically every one of those calls is responded to by multiple people, right?
Yeah, the, the emergency medical calls typically would be the ambulance and whatever district of town it's in, their emergency unit or rescue unit most times. The fires, I don't recall which ones those were exactly, but typically it's a multi-company response for significant fires. And the fire alarms, residential fire alarms or commercial fire alarms, it's a multi-company response as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Planning and zoning, that liaison is Tom Zampiano, so there's no report there. Finance Subcommittee, we did meet and there's a number of items, I'm not going to go over them now because they're embedded within our agenda, so we'll get to them a little bit later. Public Safety Communications Subcommittee.
Public Safety met on September 10th. We continued discussing the many issues that the fire department has had, and I, I want to thank the town council for your willingness to discuss it and to try to help us solve some of the issues. I also appreciate the fact, and I know that the town attorney has come and tried to help us with that. But on September 16th, there was a Zoom meeting with NORCOM, and I'm going to ask Anthony to talk about that, because I think because of that meeting and some things that he learned, that perhaps we're going to cancel the October public safety and wait till November to see if some of that thing comes to fruition.
So on, on the two lingering issues that we have, the pagers, you recall that a bunch of our pagers went into a disabled mode, and come to find out what happened was the state, because we're on the state radio system, the state had a portable radio that went rogue. Someone took it and was, shouldn't have had it, let's say. So what the state did was they stunned that phone, or that radio I should say, to keep people from talking on the state system. We were collateral damaged to that. The, the part of the pager that our programming was in, zone one, zone zero, whatever it was, when they killed that at the state level intending to stun the portable radio, they stunned our pagers as well. So when I was on the phone with, with the gentleman, Dan, from the state, he unstunned them, our pagers. So that part is good. So the game plan now is, now that we have a base, hopefully understanding that the pagers themselves are fine, the template, they're going to start scheduling and coming out, and then we'll have a, we'll all be on the same playing field with all the same template, all the same programming on the pagers. We'll see if that solves our dilemma. On the repeater side, on the fire ground, again, it was a limited sample. We did 10 portable radios and one repeater onto this new template, and the game plan or the logic is, let's do them all, and then we'll see, again, if we're having, we're having some issues now with echoing and some other crazy things on the radio. So the hypothesis is because we're not all on the same program, that that's going to lead to some confusion of the system. So NORCOM is going to come out and the programming for the portables will be done over the year. It's called OTAP, over the year programming, and the repeater is the same way. So the hope is that, given some time, once all this goes through, every pager's, every portal's got to be updated and so on, it's going to take, you know, two weeks probably that neighborhood. So we'll probably, let's say, delay that meeting, give time to get the programming on the pagers in place and the portables in place, and then hopefully, being on the same language, the issues will go away. But we won't know until that, all those things happen and time to try them out and such.
So hopefully in November, we'll have some better news.
Yeah.
And, and another reason why we're canceling the meeting is it's because Chief Lovelace's birthday that day and we didn't want to.
Chief Lovelace.
Where's his cake? I should have brought him ice cream.
It's not yet.
Preemptive.
It's in October.
I'll bring him ice cream.
Something was far too.
So the issue with the pagers, was it only North Branford that was affected?
No, it was us and Norwich.
So any others, so anyone on the state system?
Anyone on the system had the programming in slot one or slot zero.
Oh, okay.
And the same vendor that we use programmed Norwich's pagers, and I guess that zero or one is not where you're supposed to put the programming, but it was put there erroneously.
Okay.
So that's why we got stunned.
Okay. Alright, so we'll just.
Hopefully have.
To be continued.
To be, it's a saga.
Okay. Okay. Inland Wetlands.
That meet, that meeting is tomorrow night, and we're still on the same topic of the possible of subdivision of lots.
Right. Okay. Blueprint Committee.
Meeting Thursday.
This Thursday?
We're back on track. Meeting on Thursday.
Okay. And report from Town Center Committee, there isn't, because that's underneath Blueprint, so nothing there. Okay. Moving on to Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council. Last Friday was POW MIA Recognition Day, and on that morning, I was pleased to join with Mayor Angelo Ni and other leaders in the Veteran Service Commission, remembering all POWs and MIA's, including North Branford's only MIA casualty, Army Sergeant First Class James Edward Kramer, who went MIA on April 21st, 1968, in Tuatien Province in Vietnam. Included in the ceremony held at the monument on the green next to the Congregational Church, also president for the event were Bill Salvastano, Hugh Mean, with an invocation and benediction from Pastor Wendy Terry of the North Branford Congregational Church. Thanks to all those who attended, this important recognition of those who answered our nation's call and never returned home. Town of North Branford is excited to welcome Kent Falls Brewing to the town of North Branford. I was pleased to join Deputy Mayor Jeff McMillan, Assistant Town Manager Burke, and Economic Development Commission Chair Liz Kaplan, for a ribbon cutting and welcoming to Kent Falls at the location of the former stewards of the land brewery. Kent Falls opened as the first farm brewery in Connecticut at Camps Road Farm in Kent in 2015. They prioritize sourcing ingredients locally with 95% of the ingredients from within 250 miles, bringing this philosophy to Northford to create beer and experience that are local and reflective of the land and the community. They're offering the Full Pour Pills, a Northford location exclusive Pilsner, as well as Buddy Sprinkles Goes to Northward, a special edition of their IPA brewed, to celebrate the opening at the Northford location. The original location in Kent will continue to offer curated tastings and flights, while Northford will feature full pours and food trucks. Kent Falls is located at 418 Forest Road in Northford. It's open Thursdays and Fridays from 3:00 to 9:00 PM, Saturdays 12:00 to 9:00, and Sundays 12:00 to 6:00. So stop by and say hello if you have a chance. We've got some additional ribbon cuttings also coming up. Hidden Kitchen is under new ownership, so we're having a ribbon cutting there with them this Friday, the 26th, at 2:00 PM. Their location is 2341 Foxen Road. We have Ascend Bank, which is formerly Guilford Savings Bank following their merger. That will be September 30th at 9:30 in the morning. I Heart Homes Real Estate, October 23rd, will be having an event for them, 6:00 PM at 1355 Middletown Avenue. They're next to Pop Pop's Coffee. As Councillor Abelson noted, congratulations and welcome to our new fire chief, Richard Lennon, who was sworn in by Mayor Angelo Ni on September 4th. Board of Fire Commissioners meeting at Company 2 in Northford. And I was honored to be on hand last Thursday evening as Jennifer Gurley Langdon of our Town Clerk's Office received her clerk certification from the Connecticut Town Clerks Association at their fall conference at the Waters Edge Resort. This culminates two and a half years of work and study in the field and passing five modules of examination. We're proud of Jennifer's hard work and dedication, serving the residents of North Branford and bringing increased professionalism to this already excellent office, and I know you joining and congratulating Jen on this accomplishment. Later on your agenda, the confirmation of my appointment of Jennifer as our new deputy town clerk will be before you, following the retirement of Suzanne Ashman this month, and I look forward to Jennifer's continued success in our town clerk's office. Some items from Parks and Recreation, Autumn Nights at Augur Concert Series is continuing Thursdays 10 through October 9th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, weather permitting. The Back to School Family Day is this Sunday, September 28th, from 1:00 to 3:00 at Stanley T. Williams Community Center. This free event is in partnership with Beyond the Horizons and the North Branford Wellness Council. The annual trunk or treat is on Saturday, October 18th, from 2:00 to 3:30 in the Stanley T. Williams parking lot, so please join us as a trunk or trick or treat sponsor. Sensory Friendly Pumpkin Patch and Sib Shop, which is a concurrent event, is Saturday, October 25th at Stanley T. Williams from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. This event is also in partnership with Beyond the Horizon. And Park and Recreation has partnered with United Way of Greater New Haven and Vertical Church to administer the Farmer-to-Family Produce Boxes for the town on Thursdays from October 2nd through October 16th. The Totucket Historical Society is sponsoring an open house on October 4th. It's running from 10:00 AM to 3:30 PM. They're having five historic private homes in addition to the Reynolds Beers House. It's the first time they've opened up tours of this kind in a number of years. There are advanced tickets that are available at $40 and they're available at totuckahistoricalsociety.org. The North Branford Rotary is hosting their annual shredding event here at Town Hall on October 4th, 25, from 9:00 to noon, and North Branford residents can come out for our leaf drop-off, which is being held at the center located at the left of the old police station around Wall Field on Route 22, from 9:00 to 3:00 PM. On Saturdays, October 18th, 25th, November 1st, 8th, 15th, and 22nd, please place those leaves in a biodegradable leaf bag with no tape or empty loose on the ground, or they'll empty it loose on the ground. There'll be curbside pickup of leaves, if you can't make those, in untaped biodegradable bags the weeks of December 1st through December 12th. Just a reminder, they put out a monthly newsletter that goes out the 4th Friday of every month. Next one will go out Friday, September 26th. Newsletter contains news and announcements from the town, it's a great way to keep up with what we have happening in town. There's a sign-up form on the front page of the town page and on my site on the website to receive the newsletter. Also, as a reminder, we have town emergency notifications available through Civic Ready. Residents can sign up for these by texting NORTHBRANFORD, no spaces, to 38276 to get emergency alerts and community notifications. You can also sign up online at northbranfordct.gov backslash alerts, or call 475-655-0400 to sign up via phone. Notifications go out via text, email, and phone call. As a reminder, in observance of Columbus Day holiday, town offices will be closed on Monday, October 13th. As this is not a trash holiday, there will be no impact to regularly scheduled trash collection during your regularly collection, during your regular collection schedule. And we wish everyone a safe and enjoyable Columbus Day weekend, and that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, now on to Town Manager's Report regarding the Permanent Project Building Committee.
The North Branford Police Department, the balancing report on the ongoing HVAC system issue is expected this week. At that time, the third-party consultant will evaluate and make recommendations. When this is ready, we will organize that full meeting to review the results of Centex evaluation of the HVAC conditions, and this will be held again as a joint meeting of the council, PBBC, and the Board of Police Commissioners. North Branford High School, the punch list and closeout is ongoing. Glass replacements are in process and completion is now expected in mid-October, and the paving there is complete. Edric Smith Library HVAC, the engineer has been selected for approval, and this is on and this is on the council's agenda later this evening. Department of Public Works Building, the construction is in progress. Stanley T. Williams renovation project, the building evaluation is complete, and an HVAC RFP is being drafted. NBHS Storage Building, the revised plan is in process, and foundation is planned for next month. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Can you just remind Permanent Project that that storage building, the NBHS storage building, when we approve that, there is a cap on that?
Yes.
So if they're revising plans, they need to know that it's $89,000, and anything over that has to come back to the council.
They are aware, but I'll make sure that they are aware of it.
Well, I was there last week. They were aware of it.
So...
They questioned it.
We're just going by the budget that was submitted. So... Okay. Citizen's statements, petitions, and correspondence?
Good evening. Cliff Potter, Northford, Connecticut. Good to be back in town and live instead of watching on TV. I watched from New Hampshire last week, or last meeting, and I, there was some huge words passed around. Tonight, I'm ready for them. I've got my dictionary app loaded, so I can understand what's being said sometimes. Elections are coming. And I'm here every meeting pretty much. Good things. The budget hearing mess. You guys were in know-how, no way to be blamed for that. The re-eval hit you. It was like getting hit by a train. You guys dug in, dug deeper. Many hours were given. And as me, as a citizen, I appreciate it. If you got blamed for anything, shame on the blamers. They never did their homework. They never talked to anybody. They just slammed you, and it wasn't right. So that part was bad. The hours you've given, and most things that you needed to be done, are done. Good working town council. Now, I got some bad things that I still, they still bother me. One thing is the commissions. They're not user-friendly. How many meetings are we going to have over that Glenwood Road? They're worried about turtles. They're worried, they're throwing so many things. The commission's coming at the applicant with so many things. I'm surprised he has not sued the town yet. They're just trying to do, and they're willing to work with the town. They want, they're on a second sidewalk, if not three. These commissions have got to become user-friendly. The EDC works so hard, and then anybody that comes to our town gets slapped around, nitpicked, and I'm getting pretty damn tired of it, I'll tell you. But yet, they still allowed to get away with it. There's one member that says he's not comfortable. If he's not comfortable with the rules that he has to operate on, it's time to get him off the commission. I won't mention names. Just go to the videotape, and you'll see who I'm talking about. It's time for some fresh-blood, informed commissioners. It's time to run a class again. So that was one of the bad things. The other thing I was upset about, you've got subject matter experts, SME. You've got Franny. You've got Florio. SME means they know what the hell they're talking about. And they were grilled over the colds. I watched it from New Hampshire. They were asked constantly stuff by, you're not at their level of expertise? You don't know what they do every day? Try following them around one or two days a week, and you'll see. They are saving you thousands of dollars. And I don't think they ever appreciated it for it. Instead, they were grilled heavily, and suggestions were made that weren't properly made. Again, you put them in a position, they're working hard for you, me, and everybody in town, and they still get hammered. And I don't know how they stand it. I can't stand it. I mean, I was up in New Hampshire. I'm surprised you didn't hear me yelling at my computer from up there. Like I say, the next thing is elections. So be careful what you do and how you act in front of the public. They may remember come election day. Thank you.
Any other citizen's statements? Okay, moving on to resignations and appointments. The first one, the confirmation, is that the executive session?
It is, if the council wishes to do that. Yep.
Okay. So does the council want to go into executive session first before we appoint the deputy clerk? Do you want to discuss it there and then come back? It's later on in the meeting, because then we'll just...
I'm fine with doing that, but does everyone have to leave? Can we keep them in? Do we have to make people disperse?
What? Go.
For the executive session?
Well, no. Executive session's later on in the meeting. So it's just, do you want to go into executive session to discuss the appointment of Jennifer to the deputy clerk? Or do you want to just take care of it right now?
Let's just take care of it right now. I'm in the West. There's a problem with...
It follows suit with what we've been doing.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I mean, everything is...
It's above board. It follows suit with the director and assistant director methodology we've employed in every single department. Yeah. Where we've talked about contingency plan throughout Michael's tenure and having that set up properly. This is just the next logical step.
Yeah. So I think we can go right to it.
Wonderful. Again, you know, Jennifer's worked in the clerk's office for the last four years as an assistant town clerk. She's distinguished herself and is dedicated in this role, and as you're all aware, you know, I was very happy to be present last week when she was given her town clerk certification. She's worked hard to add professionalism to that office, which is already, of course, excellently administered by our own town clerk, Lisa Valenti, who joins me in supporting, recommending Jen for appointment as deputy town clerk. And I'm proud to make this recommendation to the council this evening.
Okay, so there's a motion on page 53 of our packet in regards to this...
I'll make the motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby confirms the town manager's appointment of Ms. Jennifer Langdon as a North Branford's deputy town clerk for an annual salary of $71,981 per year and a start date of September 24, 2025.
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Abelson. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Congratulations, Lisa. Please congratulate Jennifer on our behalf. Welcome as the deputy town clerk. So before, I know Jen was working as a part-time, was in a part-time position. So I think there just needs to be discussion with the council prior to that job getting posted and moving forward on that, given what the current budget situation is on that. So, but I am happy that this is moving forward, and welcome Jen as our new deputy town clerk. Okay. Next item is acknowledging the resignation of William Delacamera as an alternate to the pension committee. Willie, it's in our packet, resigned from the pension committee as an alternate. And so we thank you, so I think I saw Willie, thank you for your service, Willie, on the pension committee. And the next is an appointment of Robert Lotaraca Junior. Lotaraca? Okay, sorry. Lotaraca Junior as an alternate to the pension committee, so this will replace... Willie, it doesn't have the term ending on here. Do you know by any chance? My guess is it's 12/1.
Yeah, it was, it was, the term expires December of '25, but I can't remember if it was December 31st.
Okay, until the term ends.
It would be filling his vacancy, and Willie's term expired December of '25.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Miller. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next item is unfinished business, use of funds from sale of town-owned properties. Any update on this?
Yes, we do have a draft document. It'll be ready to go for Finance Committee in October, if you like.
Oh, okay. All right, so there's no action tonight on that. Okay, so we'll just keep it under unfinished business. Okay, new business. Item A, proposed purchase of replacement lawnmower.
Good evening. Just a little brief on this. We currently have what we call large mowers and small mowers. So we have two large mowers. Those are the 12-foot wing decks. Those do athletic fields. The Poco Field, the shop complex there, Stanley T., Totucket Valley. The small mowers are used for libraries, company for, around the schools. So we lost one out of two of our large mowers last year, in 1999. We kept it as parts to keep our 2012 going. Earlier this year, our second large mower, the 2012, it's done. We diagnosed it ourselves. We sent it to the dealer, diagnosed it, not worth repair. Parts are discontinued. It has hydraulic issues and rear-end issues. So what we're looking to do, because right now, a prime example would be, like the Poco Field, we're cutting that with a five-foot mower, so a mower smaller than this desk. The athletic fields at the high school, Totucket Valley, it's, you're talking six, seven hours to mow a complex that used to take two or three. So it's taken a toll on our grounds division. What we're proposing to do, friend and I looked into mowers, and we found the local dealership had a demo unit of 104-inch lawnmower, so it's kind of in between a small and a large. Originally, these mowers go for $37,000. It's for sale for $18,000. And there's a photo of it in the packet. We're looking to see if we could buy this with our existing, our equipment reserve funds, which, as of the end of last year, had $48,200 in it. That's excess funds from past capital, you know, purchases such as plow trucks, equipment. This would require waiving the bid threshold as well, as it's $18,000, and the bid threshold is 15. And we have done this before. I think we bought a used plow truck a year or two back, and we did the same thing. So it's all for good intentions, to save money and to keep us going.
Danny, would this suffice, being that you're too large, and this is in between? Would this suffice what we lost in the larger ones?
It will suffice probably one of them, maybe. You will see another larger one coming forward in the capital process, probably next year. Yeah. But it'll help get us through at this point.
So they only have one, not two available?
We have zero right now.
No, I'm just saying, but from the dealer.
Oh, just the one.
There's money in the reserves, so if they had two of them at that price...
Yeah, unfortunately, there's only one, because it's a demo unit, they call it. So it's a brand-new unit that they hand out as a demo for a day or two, and yeah.
How much is the large one, Dan?
The large ones are well up over $100,000. Yeah.
So you'll be requesting that in the next budget?
We will be. On a positive note, we've had the roadside mower in there for the last two years at $160,000. We bought a $50 roadside mower. That's working out great. So we're going to take that money and swap it.
Oh, so that was on the state bid, or on the...
Yeah.
Well, not state bid.
Yeah. If you look at our five-year capital, we're just going to swap them and push the mower out, so.
I have to ask, is there anything else on that state auction that we can suffice another mower? Not to say that this wouldn't be approved, but being that you're going to...
Not right now. I have been looking, and believe it or not, there's one Toro on there that matches our dead one, and they're probably getting rid of it for the same reason. So, yeah.
Okay. So do I hear, there's no motion here, but, so we just need to make a motion? If someone can make a motion to authorize the purchase and to forego the bid?
I'll make a motion to authorize, the North Branford Town Council authorizes Public Works Division to make the purchase of said mower at $18,000, utilizing the reserve fund and waiving the bid threshold.
Second.
Okay. Motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Palladino. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. The next item is award of RFP 926018 for the Edward Smith Library Engineering Services.
Yes. This item, the PPBC approved, advertised an RFP for the project. The purchasing agent received six responses. The review led to a shortlist, and then an award to AI engineers in the amount not to exceed $40,000. This firm would provide the specifications and contract monitoring for the new HVAC system at the Edward Smith Library. So if the council would like to move forward with this, you may use the suggested motion below to secure their services.
I'm okay with this. We have to get it done. Let's get it moving.
All right, it's on page 57.
Make the suggested motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby authorizes the town purchasing agent to award a contract to AI engineers of Middletown, Connecticut in the amount not to exceed $40,000 for the Edward L. Smith Library HVAC Engineering Services.
Second.
Motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Abelson. Any other discussion?
Did we have someone else doing it before it, or no? Is this new?
No, there was, there was a company that came in initially and gave three options. And that's how we applied for the steep grant. And now, to move forward, they need to have it done to come up with exactly what they're going to do.
Yeah, you're referring to the HLN's report that was done, which was the report that gave us the options that we may have, the three different options. It was just four.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next item is re-establishment of the Communications Subcommittee with the Board of Education. So we received an email from the superintendent of schools requesting that they reconvene, that we reconvene the communications subcommittee. I did send this out to all council members on August 22nd and have not heard back from anyone. So is anyone interested in serving on this subcommittee?
I thought we discussed that we would have a rotating membership, so that there was... I think that's what the Board of Ed is going to be doing. They're going to rotate the membership?
Well, the Board of Ed does have three members on the committee. They do have three members on here. We didn't discuss this at all yet, so they've, the Board of Ed has suggested they would like a rotating committee, which is up to them. But the meeting would be noticed, so it doesn't matter if you have a quorum or not, because it's going to be a post-it meeting, and everyone, anyone can attend them. We, I know in this email from the superintendent, it does say, "meeting prior to the council meeting." I'm not sure about that, because that limits how long the meeting can last on there. Maybe the first one can be that, just so that we can set all of the guidelines and everything else in regards to that. But we do not have anyone right now on a communications subcommittee meeting. So if there is anyone that is interested, just let me know now, or you can email me.
So what would this committee be doing?
It's, well, it's just to open up communications with the Board of Education.
Do you have a liaison for that?
Yes, but they would like to reconvene their communications subcommittee meeting. So we might not necessarily, depending on how this goes, you might not need the liaison. Because in my mind, that's what this committee would do. We may not have to meet every month. That's up to the committee. It could be every other month, maybe during budget season, then you might meet every month. I don't know. Each side, from my understanding, would be submitting items that would go on an agenda for that month to discuss things.
That's basically once a month?
That's what they are suggesting, but the committee can decide that. That's up to the committee. And it's also up to the committee to decide if we would meet prior to the council meeting. Because meeting prior to the council meeting, you start at 5:30, you're limited to about 45 minutes for us. And so to meet on the same night, it becomes more, it becomes more...
It's tough for some of our people to make, and myself included, sometimes, for a 6:30 meeting, now that we start early.
Right.
That might be a tough time for people. I would say...
I'll start it, and if it's whatever, I'll try it.
I'll put my head in the way to be on there.
Amen.
I think we should probably have, in my opinion, maybe have three, if we need to delineate people on there, have three permanent and at least three alternate as well, so that we can rotate out. It's good to have other opinions, and I don't...
I mean, anyone can come to the meeting. So if someone's available that night, even though they're not on the committee, they can always come, because they're open.
So we're all willing to do it.
They're all, they're open.
If you do it on a rotating basis, that's fine.
So...
It'll only be temporary for a couple of months, anyway. I'd like it to come soon, also.
Right. So...
Well, it'll only be one meeting, and then we have no idea.
So...
But the public can attend that meeting anyway. Anybody can go there, anyway.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I guess so.
Yes. So, okay. I will respond to the superintendent's comment. That will...
Why are you quiet on this, Marie? You have a liaison today.
She's pretty busy late.
Why?
Well, she's on a lot of committees.
She's on the ball right now on negotiations.
Yeah, she's, yeah.
There's a lot.
I know that.
Yeah. And this committee may not start until after elections, anyway, because we only have...
It could be, and I'd not be here, you know?
Right. So that's, that's a good, that's a good reason not to start it until in November, because you don't know who's going to be there.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
And their members may also change that are on the committee. So, so we can definitely hold off until after the election and just move forward at that time. So, okay. All right. Next item, company for renovation update. I asked to have this put on the agenda. This is a CIP project that we approved maybe two years ago. Three?
2223.
The 2223. And this, from my understanding, was to renovate the kitchen, and there was $20,000 appropriated for this project.
That's a second appropriation. The $20,000 was in 24 or 25 for the kitchen.
For the kitchen. Right. So that's, isn't that what?
Right, right, right.
So that's what we're talking about, is the update, the renovation. So that's what we're talking about, is the update, the renovation to the Company Four, just because we I, I think it just started, or I don't know if it's finished yet, but it's in the process. So because it was just a renovation to the kitchen, it was not sent to permanent project. It was just basically replacing cabinets and countertops and appliances. But from information that we received, I believe it's over budget. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so who exactly is in charge of this project? Because it's not permanent project. It's, I don't know, I don't think it's Public Works because it's not theirs. Ultimately, is it Fire Commission?
It's Public Works with the Fire Commission. This is how I would characterize it.
So. So I guess, I guess the question is, how did it go over budget and who's paying for it?
Well, there's, there's two pots of money. There's the twenty thousand that you referenced was the Losip project in twenty-four, five. That was for the kitchen. There was the initial one that I referenced, the sixty-five for the roof project in twenty-two, twenty-three. We spent thirty-four, and there's a laundry list of things at that building that have not been addressed since it was built in two thousand and three. There's stucco repairs needed, there's siding that's damaged. There's the metal door frames that have rotted out from the salt around, around the building. So the, the consensus was that we were gonna take the, the money that was left over from that project and address some of these other capital items that are repair items, basically, that have not been done at Company Four. Again, including the siding repairs, stucco repairs, some money towards the kitchen project. You're right, it's over the twenty thousand that was originally budgeted as the separate standalone project. And that's where, again, there, this is only, there's still the, the stucco and the door frames and the siding have not been addressed yet. But there, again, they're, they're in need. We could, I could get some pictures for you to show you the different items that are in need of addressing up there.
Well, and that, that's fine, but I guess my concern is, is that there was twenty thousand appropriated for kitchen renovations. And we're over, and money is spent, but there's been, I, I haven't seen anything come back to the council or heard anything come back to the council stating, "We're over and we need more money, and this is where we're getting it from." So the money was just spent to, to do all of it, and I'm not saying that it's, that it wasn't necessary, but that wasn't the scope of the original project. And, and then nothing came back to us. And I checked Fire Commission meeting minutes to see, was it discussed at a Fire Commission meeting anywhere along the line? I couldn't see anything. And I know, you know, I know the new chief is here, but this, he kind of walked into this.
They mentioned, they mentioned the renovations at the last meeting, but that it was moving forward. That's all that was mentioned as far as what was going on. Not how much work, what kind of work, it was just in the process. That's all that was mentioned in the meeting.
Okay.
But shouldn't it be like, were the extra money from that roof project, if that's where it came from, shouldn't it actually kind of come to the council?
You're a hundred percent right. I'll, I'll take the hit for not following the process. You're a hundred percent right. They should have came back with it with an updated budget, with the funding sources delineated. I'll take the hit for it. You're a hundred percent right.
So I heard something about the women's sleeping quarters, that they wiped it out? Did they wipe out those women's sleeping quarters? Did they move the women's sleeping quarters?
The, no, there's always this third bedroom there. There's a third bedroom.
Okay.
There was talk about moving the office back over, but they've made that the third bedroom now is a combination bedroom slash Company Four office. It's gonna be interesting how it plays out, but.
Okay.
Okay. So how much are we over budget? Like, how much do we have to?
Thirty-five as, as a good number. The thirty-three that's on this sheet, there was some additional lumber that was purchased. There were some additional saw blades. You're probably, you're probably gonna be thirty-five when all is said and done.
Okay, so if, if the CIP was sixty-five for the roof and we have roughly thirty thousand left because we've spent thirty-five thousand dollars on there. So is your proposal to use fifteen thousand out of that thirty? So we have fifteen thousand dollars left.
For other repairs.
For other repairs.
Like those doors and stuff?
The doors, the stucco, the siding that's damaged.
And do we have any idea what we're thinking that's gonna come in at yet?
I don't think, Dan. Dan, do you have the prices on that stuff yet? On the stucco siding, no, we don't.
And, and the doors that need, like, all of that stuff, does the Fire Commission, I see, I know Mr. Savatello is here from Fire Commission. Have you talked about any of this stuff? Do you have a list of the stuff that needs to be done?
It's just a little something here because I.
Okay. Okay. All right. So what needs to be done so that we can fix, you know, finalize the kitchen renovation? And it's more than kitchen because it went into bedrooms and their general area, it seems like, and everything else. So it's not just kitchen. It's internal stuff there. So is there anything that needs to be done now to?
Do you think we have an idea that that, think that money will cover it? We have leftovers on the roof. Will that cover everything that's gotta be done to that building?
I don't know.
We haven't got any prices on any of that stuff yet. I was thinking, well, we'll have to get, we have to redo it.
Okay.
That was way back when, twenty, well, twenty-two, twenty-three. We did get a pressure wash, I think, right in.
Right.
Pressure wash, that was done, but the stucco, the stucco was minor stuff. The doors would probably be the, I don't know how many doors, are they all the doors?
Probably two or three of the frames are rotten out.
That's, that's gonna be expensive. Well, we'll get a price for it.
So Fran, you guys are actually doing all the work?
We did some of it. We, we were gonna do it in the winter, but it just didn't work out, so we did hire, we did the demo stuff and some patching walls, and we had the cabinets put in and the flooring was put in by contract.
The members of Company Four did the painting inside. We bought the paint.
So maybe we can get like, uh, some sort of ballpark of what it's gonna cost, and maybe we can approve using the money that they have from the roof floor? Left door for roof, if it covers?
Do you, do you need any approval today to finish the work that you're working on right now? The interior kitchen, all that stuff to move forward with, I mean, to fini, to?
I'd make a motion, if you, if you, if you're so inclined, to move the surplus fifteen thousand of the surplus funds from the twenty-two, twenty-three roof project towards the kitchen renovation project.
Do I hear a motion to, to move that motion? Do I have someone to move that motion that Anthony just stated? To move fifteen thousand from the twenty-two, twenty-three CIP roof project to the kitchen renovation project?
That seemed like something the council might want to do?
I don't know, but.
Unfortunately, if we don't.
Been done. Well, yeah, but if we don't know going forward what it's even gonna cost, isn't it a little?
Well, well, the, well, they did have, they did have the, the kitchen, that renovation, they're.
This is known. This is, that would cover the gap on what we have.
That stuff is, is all bought. The, the, the appliances are bought, the cabinets, the, the countertop, flooring, all of that.
The fifteen thousand would cover that.
Would cover that, okay, okay.
Would cover that part of it.
This is a fifteen K not to exceed? Or are you looking for more afterwards?
Well, we don't know how much more we're gonna look for after, because Public Works has to get, for all the other items, they have to get pricing on that. But to, to finish the interior work.
Finish the approved part so far.
The fifteen thousand.
And then going forward, what they should do is bring forward the prices and everything, once they have that for your action.
Correct.
To modify.
Yeah, we want to see an updated proposal and some prices. We can't prove things without having.
What it's gonna cost to finish it, right?
Yeah, yes.
So I'll, I'll second Anthony's for the fifteen thousand.
Well, you, you're, you're gonna move it. Anthony just made the motion, so you're, you're, he sug, he had a suggested motion, so you're gonna move that motion?
Yes, I'll move that motion.
And is there a second?
I will second that. You know, I just don't like the way this came about to us tonight. I think that's why we're all reluctant about doing this. I mean, I'm not saying that it wasn't gonna get done, it had to get done.
Right.
You know, and unfortunately, sometimes when they, when they start working on something, it's like anything else. You start taking things down, you start seeing more and more and more repairs that have to be done. At that point is when it's sort of, hold on a second, we gotta go to town council, we gotta get this approved and get this one. But I'll make this motion, even though I'm not too happy about it, but I'm gonna.
Second it.
Because they need something there.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay. Okay, so the motion was made by Counselor Goad, seconded by Counselor Miller. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? This is only for the kitchen part, and Public Works will be coming back to us with the exterior door frame, stucco, any exterior things that need to be done, siding repairs. They're gonna come back with that cost to us.
Can I say something that's not on, kind of the same subject as this, but as a council and as? I think when, um, we approve a project and we say it's gonna be, we approve a project for, say, I'm just making up numbers, five million dollars. So if we approve something we're built for five million dollars, that should be the number that we approve. So if you're gonna go build it and we approve the project, and six months later you find out that, oh, it's not gonna be five million, it's gonna be five million, five hundred thousand. So well, that means instead of getting your five thousand square foot building, your building is now gonna be four, forty-five hundred. In other words, when we appro, this is kind of the way that, you know, because some of our bigger projects, everything that we approve always gets added on to. So if we approve a project or approve a chunk of money, it should be, that is what you're getting. So don't, if, you know, if it's a seven million dollar project, don't come up and say it's gonna be seven, five, eight. Start at sixty-five and build it, because when the time comes, that's what you're getting. You know, because it seems like, of course, every, prices go up, but it should be, you know, and every, and every, it's always, oh, well, while we're at it, you know, it's another, oh, a thousand dollars, but it would cost ten thousand if we do it later on. Oh, nothing, maybe just, everything just gets added. Everything that comes before us is always piled and piled and added on to, so.
And that's why we made the motion we did for that athletic storage building, that there is a cap on it.
Yeah, that is the amount.
And there's a process, and the reason the processes are in place is to keep this from not happening.
But I don't understand how something can happen.
Of course something can happen, there's circumstance.
What happened is, when did we approve this? When did you approve this?
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
It, that was three years ago.
No, that, that was the roof, twenty-four, twenty-five was the.
So we did it for last year?
Yeah.
But I'm just saying that in, in general, it should be that way. So you're getting approved seven million for a project, you probably should start at six, because you're only gonna get seven. Because it can't always just be seven, oh, it's eight, oh, it's eight.
But I think a lot of what happened over the year is the prices have just like skyrocketed. And that we can't, honestly, we can't control that, but I get what you're saying.
You gotta start lower then, because the only money you're gonna get is what was approved.
Well, obviously, it doesn't work that way, so.
Yes, well, I'm trying to make a statement back there. I know in real life it works that way, but at home.
You get a proposal, proposals come with a time period that they're good until, if you're gonna start, you have a anticipated start date. If it's going to go beyond that start date, you come back to us. We can, for the foreseeable future, if there's a project that we don't want to see get higher, then let's put stipulations on it. This proposal, this approval is good until X, because it's on us. So every time we approve something and we, and we let it go higher, it's on us because we're saying yes to it. So from now on, if we want to, if we want to mitigate that, we're gonna put an expiration date on something and say, "This motion carries until X." And then if they need to go beyond that, or a project carries on and we don't get to it, it has to be reapproved. That's a bunch of talk.
Okay.
Not here. Can I make a comment?
We just need to take a vote. Well, we need to take, we didn't vote on this yet. So motion is on the floor. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay. We're just gonna move on to. Next item is renewal of the Auger House agreement. This is with the Board of Education. And at the last Board of Ed meeting, there was some discussion about some work that had been done at the Auger House. And when I looked up the contract or the use agreement, because it's not a lease, they do not pay us anything. So it's not called a lease. It is a use and occupancy agreement. I noticed that it had expired in twenty, June thirtieth of twenty-four. So the town attorney has updated. And everything is essentially the same, except the date was changed to twenty-eight. Is, I, I see that. Is that it? Okay. So same agreement, just changing the date so that it's.
So we're doing a three-year, or is it one year?
No, no, it's, it's until June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-eight.
So it's three years, okay.
So shouldn't the motion conclude that date in it then?
No, it doesn't, but we can add it to it. Are we okay if we make a motion?
Well.
We talked about when we put it together.
Yeah.
Now we're just pushing it forward. It's still in use.
The last time it was in twenty-two.
Fantastic program.
I'm good with that.
So I'm making a suggested motion that the North River Town Council authorizes Town Manager Michael P. Downs to sign the renewed use and occupancy agreement for the Auger House with the Board of Education on behalf of the town with an expiration date of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-eight.
Second.
Motion has been made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any other discussion? Just so you know, at the board meeting last week, the superintendent did mention that he is looking for some other space to use for this program, so I'm not sure how.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, what, what do they use it for?
Their, their school-to-work program, so it's the students that graduate, but they're, they're specialized students, they're IEP. So they have to provide education until the age of twenty-two. So.
Awesome program.
So they use it and, and it's getting them out into the community and working, and they actually have started a few different programs there. I know they make dog treats and sell them and things like that. So he, I'm not so sure how long they're going to be in there, but this would allow them to be in there. And if he finds some other space and moves, then so be it, but.
I think that might, that would be an interesting agenda topic for the first time we get together, because we, we don't really know what's going on and what they're doing.
Right.
I think that would be a good topic for discussion.
Right.
Do you want me to suggest, to change my suggested motion to add in there, you know, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-eight or otherwise?
Well, they, there's a, there's a, there's a provision in the agreement that they, either party can get out of it.
I thought so.
Yeah, that's, that's part of it in there. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay. Next item, participation in new national opioid settlement, Alvegin, Amneal, Apotex, Hikma, Indivor, Mylan, Sun, and Zytus.
So this is yet another opioid settlement we are being offered to participate in, it'll be the third one. To participate in it, just need the council's authorization. Town attorney's reviewed. We recommend allowing us to participate in this and as a result, being able to benefit from the resulting claim.
So this essentially only, I mean, essentially gives us funding. There's not really any, other than signing a name to it.
No exposure or risk.
No exposure, okay. There's no written, um, uh, motion on here, correct?
There is a motion at the bottom of the memorandum.
Let's see where on this. Oh, here we, I'm sorry, I missed that. Where did it go when we're done? I'm, it's a suggested motion that the North River Town Council authorizes Town Manager Michael P. Downs to sign the participation form to participate in the national opioid settlement with Alvegin, Amneal, Apotex.
I really just put those there because I wanted to see you guys pronounce all of those names.
Mylan's Sun, I know that one, and Zytus, and receive the distribution from this settlement.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor. Motion has been made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Miller. Discussion? So you said this is the third one?
Yeah, we had a second one that was before you, just last month. And then before that, we also had a standing...
Well, is that the one from the state that we get? I'd like, that had like...
Not the last one.
No, 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 the one before that was...
The one that we have standing, yes.
The triple one that might come to the state, and then it's a tri- we did, under that umbrella.
Yeah.
Do we know how much we're looking at between the three so far? I mean, we only have the two that have been bigger.
We really only have, we haven't seen anything from the second one, and we just authorized that a month ago, but...
But the first one, which comes from the state.
The first one, we have a standing, it shows in your budget, I don't know what the term currently tally is on it.
I can give you a number for how much we've got so far. And if, when those monies come in, where are we housing those monies?
Those go right into a fund designated for it.
Okay, so anything that's used has to come through us, correct?
Yes.
We can't, can't be used appropriated for some other project.
Correct. And the council has approved previous uses associated with the wellness council, and also has used it for salaries associated with the police officers that are associated with the state program that has to do with that, and it offsets the cost of the officers.
Yeah, statewide narcotics stuff.
Yes.
Yeah.
Did you say that we received some already, or no?
We had like a hundred thousand dollars from two previous years.
Correct.
In the fund. So have we transferred the money that we authorized for... Okay, because I know we have to submit reports as to how we've used this money and if we've used it.
Next report is due at the end of this month.
So where is it now?
So I would, I would suggest that we probably do that to show that we've used some money, otherwise, because if we...
We don't want to claw it back.
If, well, if we continue not to use it, we will not receive, because they will...
I just have a question. When that 100,000, were we notified that day?
Yeah, it's in the budget.
So I'm going to work with...
And we authorized money to go to the police department. That money never went to the police department?
No.
It hasn't been transferred.
We haven't transferred it out yet, but it's been authorized by the council, so when we submit the report, yes, it'll be in the report.
To transfer into, into the, into the police budget, because it'll have to go into salary, that's what we authorized it for. Was to, to go towards salary.
I just don't recall.
Because it hasn't been in your pocket yet.
Well, it doesn't, so, okay.
I will be reporting, coming to the council in a future meeting, hopefully. I would like to work with Chief Lovelace on a program that we've discussed to possibly look at expanding, you know, span of exposure within our schools, like we had back in the day, when I was growing up with deer.
Like a similar deer program or something like that?
Yeah, possibly a school resource officer or something like that. So nothing, you know, has been baked yet on this, but something that I'm passionate about working on with our chief and other folks within that department. And I think it's an interesting thing to think about, given the landscape of America right now, and some of the things that are going on. I think exposure in the school system would be, you know, above and beyond security. So this would not replace security whatsoever. I love what has been done with that in North Branford. I'm proud of North Branford for doing that, but something to consider, and we'll talk about more in the future.
Okay. So the motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay. Next item is elections. A, gifting of voting tabulators to the town of North Branford.
Yes, so on this item, as you'll recall, the state authorized a lease agreement. The town agreed, the town council agreed to sign that lease agreement. Subsequently, the governor signed Public Act 25-5, which allows the Secretary of State's office to gift the tabulators to all of the towns. And following the enactment of that measure, we were sent notice of the termination of that lease agreement. So as a requirement of receiving these tabulators as a gift, there are two documents that need to be signed, a municipal electronic voting equipment agreement, and the Elections System and Software LLC Hardware Maintenance and Software License Maintenance and Support Services Agreement.
And there's no funds that need to be exchanged?
No. These are being turned over to us. The only funds that would need to be exchanged are, of course, because just as under the terms of the agreement, we're responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of these tabulators. So this is before you...
Basically, council votes, Mike, machine that counts?
It's the machines we have now.
Yeah, it's the 11 tabulators that we have.
No, they're giving them, so we're leasing them right now. We're actually paying for the lease to utilize them, they have to utilize for...
So they're giving them to us?
End of election, they're gonna...
It's a dollar, it's a dollar lease, so...
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
They purchased the hardware we maintained.
They switched equipment.
So there is a motion on page 75 of our packet.
I make a motion that the North Branford Town Council authorizes Town Manager Michael P. Downs to sign the Municipal Electronic Voting Equipment Agreement between the Secretary of State's Office and the town of North Branford, and the Elections Systems and Software LLC Hardware Maintenance and Software License Maintenance and Support Service Agreement between Elections Systems and Software LLC and the town of North Branford in order to receive the previously issued 11 voting tabulators as a gift from the state.
Motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Abelson. Any other discussion?
What if you said no?
I think the town attorney just told us. It's non-negotiable.
You've seen unfunded mandates. The formality.
Lisa will count them by hand.
I'm hanging Chad's in North Branford.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay. So the rest of this, I think, is just the actual document. Is that the only motion? The rest of this is...
It covered both.
It covered both documents, yes.
Okay.
So that is also B, A and B?
Yes.
Okay.
A little bit confusing on the...
Trying to consolidate.
I like it.
All right. Next is household hazardous waste, laid law, environmental services settlement.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this item, the Southern Connecticut Regional Water Authority was given an opportunity to settle a liability that they had. It was associated with the Phillips Services Corporation for waste that it sent to this facility via laid law. It obligates South Central Regional Water Authority to pay $13,078. So dividing that among the participating towns, North Branford's share would be $817.38. The settlement terms relieve South Central Regional Water Authority and our towns from any potential further obligations related to the suit. And if the suit should go forward, it's likely there'd be a larger expense. So their attorney has advised this, their board has reviewed it and approved it. Our council has reviewed and recommends authorizing, authorizing the signature of this for remitting $817.38 to Haz Waste Central for the Laid Law Environmental Services Settlement.
There's a motion on page 94.
The North Branford Town Council authorizes the payment of $817.38 to Haz Waste Central for the Laid Law Environmental Services Settlement.
Second.
Motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Discussion?
Take it from the Haz Waste, other contractual account.
Okay, I was gonna ask where that...
Should I add that into the motion?
Yeah, please.
Okay. To add to my motion, please add then onto that the, what are we calling that account? The hazardous waste?
The hazardous waste department's other contractual account.
Other contractual, okay. As stipulated by its director, do you have a number on that?
Stand by.
Mike, can I ask you a question? Did that actually affect the town of North Branford, just whatever happened?
Well, our...
Because you're generators, part of your waste along the region went out to this landfill facility. And, you know, the person who's responsible, the generator of the waste, where it came from, ultimately responsible for the disposal of the waste. And the vendor picked by Southern Connecticut years ago is not in business. And bottom line is there was an environmental circle, there's an environmental responsibility for the site. They're going back to all municipalities and corporations that generated this waste. So it ultimately is your responsibility if your vendors do not manage it correctly and dispose of it correctly.
So is it like, what kind of, is it just regular garbage, or is it like contaminated waste?
Contaminated waste going out there that was generated here in your towns. And the site's contaminated. The question is, it's a cheap way to get out of a lawsuit liability, that 800 bucks, you're gonna spend a lot more.
But this is a solstice from further...
Correct.
And we haven't finished the motion.
Department 8401, account 55990.
As stipulated.
Okay, no, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I apologize.
No, that's the same kind of question, so I've taken it as something that happened years ago.
Yeah.
The date's in your packet, you're like, pull up the date.
800 bucks gets it over with.
Yeah, exactly.
A lot of...
Yeah.
Yeah, you really got, it's the largest paper item in the...
It's in the packet.
Eight hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just get it done.
Looks like it was somewhere between 1980 and 1999, so, okay.
It's pretty old.
That's cool.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay, next item, administrator benefits. This was a finance discussion, several finance committee meetings. So this is finally coming forward to the council.
Excuse me.
Page 155 starts.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's hazardous, it's pretty large.
Yes.
Okay, here we are.
Okay. Okay. So Mike, do you want to just recap this for us?
Sure. So this year, the administrators group requested three items that have been under review over the course of several meetings at finances, the mayor mentioned. They had to do with longevity, years of service relative to vacation payout, and the payout of sick leave on retirement. These requests are detailed in the memorandum from them that's offered in support of this memo. You can see their memo concerning it. The finance subcommittee voted to advance to the full council two of those items. The vacation, removing the restriction that administrators have 10 years of service to be paid, up to five unused vacation days at the end of his or her anniversary date of hire. This is requested as no bargaining unit in the town has such a restriction with the collective bargaining agreement, and is a restriction that's currently only on the administrative group. And the second one, sick leave, increasing the maximum number of sick days that can be accrued from 200 to 300 days, which will be paid out at 25% upon retirement. This is a change to their request of 400 days. In my meetings with the administrators, I noted, I'd support 300 days for the finance committee, but not the 400 days. And the administrators agreed to that. So those two items were reviewed by finance. Finance agreed to forward to the full council. Those two items, they elected not to advance the longevity requests to the council.
So essentially, this gets, as you well know, the administrators are the, one of the only factions that are not underneath the collective bargaining agreement. And these were two areas where they came back to us and asked for some adjustment. The finance committee had adjudicated, but they were, you know, what they were asking and made, kind of negotiated towards what we thought was a fair settlement. And this is what became to bring to the full council. To make it more in line with not only what the other departments and areas have, but also within kind of the landscape of other quarters, like... Rose, you want to add anything?
No, I mean, it's like on the vacation pay, they would get paid out for vacation time. The thing that we're removing, or they have requested, is that they have the 10-year service requirement in order to get five unpaid, if they have five days leaving, that they can get paid up to five days of vacation on there. And so, so they, you know, if they're here more than 10 years, they're gonna get it anyway, so it's not an additional benefit. The benefit is, is that they're the only group that has the restriction of, they have to work 10 years before they can get paid unused vacation days, and only five.
And what percentage do they get of that day?
25. Or no, that's, but that's for the sick leave. This is full, when we're talking about the vacation days, it's full value of the vacation days.
Yeah, so it's, they're capped at how many vacation days they can earn, which I believe we were told the max is 25 days, correct? And that's someone that's been here a very long time.
So you could save 25 days?
No, you could, you could get paid for, on your, they get paid based on their anniversary date. So if they didn't have the opportunity and they have five unused vacation days, they could get paid. They could ask to be paid for, they would just get paid for those five days. Otherwise, they would be forced to take them, and they would still get paid for them. So we're not saving any money on it.
We thought it was an attractive retention tool, traction or retention tool, that did not expose our budget tremendously, so it was, it's already somewhat, money's built in. And if someone is not utilizing their time, which we hope they do utilize their time, because vacation's clearly important to decompress, but if they don't, and they have, you know, they're here and doing their, you know, doing their job.
It's a matter of parity. They're the only town employees that have that restriction on them. All the other town employees in the bargaining groups can do it without the ten.
So basically, they're, whatever vacation days they don't use, they get paid for.
Up to five.
Up to five.
Up to five.
Up to five, yep.
Prefer.
Yep.
So take them off.
I don't think it's right, but I'm trying to even put that... I mean, they accumulated and wanted to get paid for, but that's my opinion.
Well, that's what, that's what this does.
I agree.
Yeah. The other one on the sick leave, increasing, is there, I don't know if that, was this changed? Was there some other provision in some personnel or benefit document that the admin have? Is there anyone grandfathered in right now under sick leave that they get the full?
Townwide there is.
Yeah. Which...
Okay, Lisa, do you want to come up and just, since...
So grandfathered is not as far as this provision. You mean overall sick time? That's the question.
Yeah, on the sick leave, because we're, you're looking to, the request was to, on the cap, increase it from 200 days to 300, originally 400, but back down to 300, so increase.
Yeah, that's for, in 1991, the town, and it's townwide, it's not just administrators, it's everyone. Well, not for that side, town side. They changed it. It used to be, prior to 1991, it was, if you were here and you were, you could accumulate 200 days, it was always the 200 days, you would be paid out 100% if you retired, and 50% if you left in good standing. In 1991, the town changed that to keep the 200 days. Anyone hired, I think it was July 1st of 1991, a lot of the towns were, you know, coming back down on the sick time, because it was too expensive. And what they said, anyone hired July 1st, 1991 forward, you could accumulate 200 sick days, but the buyout would be if you retire, it's 25% you get paid for. If you leave within good standing, it's 10%. So this request for the administrators goes to that portion, the 25% and the 10% only. Not anybody that's grandfathered that doesn't touch any of those. I'm the only administrator that's grandfathered in. This does not pertain to me. It would not increase my 200 days. This is for the section, that's why in my, in the proposal, it cites a particular section of the administrators' policies to show the distinction between the two. And then townwide, that I know of.
Joe, you're grandfathered in?
Mine's set by the police D V.
Oh, you're separate, okay. I don't know about the P D. I think there's got to be at least three or four other people, I think. I'm not positive Anthony could.
It's two clerical and one public works.
Okay, I was close. So there's only four of us that are grandfathered in, prior to nineteen ninety-one. In a different category. So this would pertain to just the administrators, everyone else.
So the new request increases that a hundred days?
Well.
Twenty-five percent.
But they don't, they.
Right, the payout is twenty-five percent or ten percent.
Right, so it increases the amount that they can accumulate.
You can essentially, so this actually ends up saving you money.
Yeah, because if they took all the sick days.
They can take the sick days, they can come up, let me, I can get a document in two seconds. You know, this way here, it's an attract, again, another traction or retention tool, which actually ends up saving you money by having people in-house versus utilizing the doctor's note and getting paid in the full at one hundred percent.
Yeah.
It makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, so the additional hundred days, going from two hundred to three hundred, it would be, if they retired, it's an additional twenty-five days. Or an addition, if they resigned in good standing, it would be an additional ten days.
It's not.
I mean, that's, everything before that they have is already in the agreement.
The one librarian also.
How long would you have to work here to accumulate?
I know there weren't many.
Says right here, twenty years without using a single sick day.
Together, Anthony?
To get three hundred days.
That's a good employee.
Yeah, it really is. Think about that. It's a good employee.
That's a good employee.
And these are things that we can do to keep good employees.
That's a good employee.
Somebody missing out on a lot of time off.
Yeah, I mean, sick days, you know, yeah, that's a good employee, so.
Okay.
That's why we suggested the motion to go forward.
So there's two suggested motion, one for each proposal. It's on page one fifty-eight.
I'll make those motions. The North Brantford Town Council authorizes the amendment of the Administrator's Benefit Package to remove the restriction that administrators must have ten years of service to be paid up to five unused vacation days at the end of their anniversary.
Motion has been made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Goad. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Second motion, that the North Brantford Town Council authorizes the amendment to the Administrator's Benefit Package to increase the maximum accrual of sick days from two hundred to three hundred days to be paid at twenty-five percent of his or her accumulated sick leave upon retirement. Second.
Motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Goad. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Motion carries. Okay. Next item is Administrator Salary Ranges.
Madam, this obviously comes from finance as well. As you know, we are reevaluating to stay on top of salary ranges for, for our employees. We are looking at the subcommittee's request to modify the presented ranges. The ones before you are calculated by Consumer Price Index. And this was referred from the May Finance Subcommittee to advance to the council for your review.
Okay, so on, on this list here where it says twenty twenty-five salary, is that the salary prior to reviews with the town manager?
Yes, that's prior to this year's merit review raises, yes.
Okay.
Do we have to approve this now?
Yes, I, I, we're not, this does not approve any raises or anything. All it is, is the salary range that is used.
Or approving the logistics.
So that if any position's open, they go by this salary range chart.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So there's, it, so, and, and the salaries that are listed there, doesn't mean that that's, we're not approving that they get.
This is the ranges they're gonna use.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
And the reason that they did this is, we agreed that, you know, because the union contracts, every time they, you know, they get raises every year, that's built into their contract. But if we don't adjust this salary schedule, we get right back into the old problem that we had, where the compression rate, that gets very close, because the other ones are going up and we've done nothing with this. So we've, at a prior meeting, we agreed that we would do a C P I adjustment on the salary ranges, so that we can keep this more up to date.
Yeah, we don't want to continue, last time, if you remember, we did this, and we had to make wholesale changes because we were so behind the eight ball.
Yeah, it's an outcropping of the, the H R O study that was done.
Yeah.
For the council, the consultants, and it's just making sure that after they've done that work, that we stay on top of those ranges and make sure that they stay in tune with where they ought to be.
It allows Michael Gold's post to work off of.
So. And I believe there is a motion.
I gotta turn this back around.
Here's a motion at the bottom of the memo.
Yep.
As long as sure everyone's in tune with this, I'll make the motion that the town council adopt. Oh, the wrong one.
Should be the town council approve the Administrator's Salary Range.
On page one sixty.
The updates to these ranges.
Okay, I'm ahead of it. It was before. Okay, the town council approved the Administrator's Salary Range as presented, and the updates to these ranges being made annually based on C P I.
Second. Motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay, next one is Position Change, Account Clerk One Tax Department.
We've got item K, Madam Mayor, Criteria for Retirement's of Sick Time Payout.
Oh, sorry, yeah. So Criteria for Retirement Sick Time Payout. Uh, no, this is, this is lengthy. Rory, would you like to come forward and just kind of explain? This is a little bit different than what we just did.
Correct. So historically, you know, you just reviewed the language for sick time payouts, twenty-five percent upon retirement, ten percent upon separation of good standing, so it begs the question, what is retirement? Historically, retirement was tied to the pension, and so if a pension application was submitted, somebody would be retiring. Because we moved away from the pension, the question is open, and it would be better to come up with a policy in advance than to figure it out when something arises. So I, I went through all of the town policies looking for age and service requirements related to retirement, and so that's what's on the memo in front of you, is all the various ages and service durations that are required, and what they represent.
Why fifty-five? Normal retirement has gone up. Why aren't we filing like what a four one K, we filed the pension prior, and we're in a D C plan now. So normal retirement age, it would be fifty-nine and a half.
Yeah, I was going off of the existing town documents. And I, I put a suggested motion in, figuring you might want to change the numbers, but, just to give you a structure.
Did retirement age go up to sixty-two? It's not fifty-nine and a half anymore?
Still fifty-nine and a half within a retirement plan, but there is conversation of it going to early retirement of sixty-two.
Is there a required age that somebody that works for the town has to retire?
I, you know, the, what you might run into is, is somebody who is leaving employment with the town, who submits, instead of resignation letter, they say, I'm retiring. Because it would entitle them to fifteen percent more payout. So just by defining what retirement is, you can avoid that situation.
Yeah, the sixty-two you're talking about is when you can take benefits.
No, just as a question, I'm saying, I'm saying, um, somebody reads, if, does, does the town have a rule like that? I know my wife's involved in the school system, and there's some people that are, they just never retire. Basically, they should basically shouldn't retire.
I, I believe the police depart, don't you have a mandatory?
Yeah.
They have a mandatory retirement.
Different, because there is predicated on.
Yeah, bona fide occupational qualifications. Yeah.
Don't you do it by years? Or is there an age?
Mandatory retirement is sixty-five for police officers.
So, so we, do we have an age?
For the police department?
No, that's, that's why I'm.
Do.
Yeah, so, you know, like, you, you cannot withdraw from your four one K before a certain age, right? But theoretically, someone could retire before that.
Sure.
There's nothing stopping them from doing that, and so.
Baseball player can do that.
By creating a policy, we kind of nip that argument in the bud, and you say, it only qualifies as a retirement if you meet the criteria that we have established.
But Rory, the, I, I'm okay with that. I think that makes sense. But we, this number is derivative of what we have looked at in the past. It was derivative of the pension plan, which was fifty-five, right? We no longer, for the most part, partake in the pension. It's a dwindling resource, which has now been replaced by the defined contribution plan. What is, and I think I know, but I'll, I'll refer to you to tell me, what is in our adoption agreement defined as retirement in the four one K pension?
With the four oh one?
Four oh K.
Sixty-five.
Is it sixty-five? It's not fifty-nine and a half early retirement?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five for retirement age in the D C?
I'm surprised to hear that, actually. It should be.
Six five.
Fifty-nine.
I thought it was fifty-nine and a half. It might be.
I'm not aware of that.
No.
So if we actually put a restriction on somebody who works for the town of Branford at sixty-five, that means they have to retire at sixty-five?
No.
No.
It just means they cannot, they, they cannot claim that they are retiring for sick time payout purposes unless they meet the criteria that you establish.
You can't be, you know, twenty years in the job and.
Right.
Forty-eight and retire.
When the request first went to the finance committee, this was an issue that arose. Well, what is retirement? And so I put together a memo just laying out what already exists in town documents as a starting point.
Yeah, to be clear, this was, this is the finance committee requesting clarification, and that's, this is what we arrived at to provide that.
Are we, we sure it's sixty-five in these option agreements?
I don't write it.
Yeah, if you don't mind, just quickly, it, early retirement, derivative of what the Department of Labor stipulates is fifty-nine and a half.
Yeah, but that's early retirement, but that doesn't include, if you put it at fifty-nine and a half.
You could take, you could take your benefit.
You could take your benefit. Honestly, I, personally, I think sixty, depending on the individual, but I think sixty-five would be a number.
You can't do that.
Well, that's what you're asking for.
No, you can't, depending on the individual, you can't do that. That's discrimination.
The purpose for what you're doing, just so you know, is for the two resolutions you just passed.
Correct.
Right.
Has nothing to do with whether someone's able to retire or has to retire.
It just defines.
You're defining a number for these people. So they can sit there and say, I'm retiring. Well, you haven't reached sixty-five yet, so you can't get.
No, 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 that's not what it's doing. That's not what this is for.
There's one thing retiring under your defined benefit plan. This just says, if I've been here, what does it mean for me to get Administrator Benefit? Benefits?
The twenty-five percent payout as opposed to ten.
We just approved.
You have to, you have to retire, but you have to say what is.
Yeah. If I, as a thirty-something-year-old, say that I'm retiring from the town of North Branford, and I'd like twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
Unless you have criteria established, maybe I am retiring, maybe I'll never work again. You don't know that. But if you set an age restriction, you say you have to be a minimum of fifty-five years of age, and have worked for the town a minimum of ten years to collect that benefit. Otherwise, you, you separate with the ten percent in a good standing separation.
Define that somewhere. It's not defined as.
It's just defining your sick day payout.
I get it. I totally get it. So, I mean, it's just we have to come up with a number.
Which we just approved.
I don't think we, I don't, yeah, we just approved to do that. I think if we have, if we have built it off, and it's derivative of the pension plan prior, and we are no longer using the pension plan as our main mode of retirement funding vehicle, and we are using the defined contribution as our main funding vehicle for retirement, then we piggyback off of what is on the adoption agreement.
My, my only recommendation would be to add a service component to it as well.
Of course, yes, I agree with that as well.
Just so somebody's not hired at sixty-four, works one year, and.
Correct, I understand that, and I agree with that as well.
I could do that, no.
All right, let's hear what he says, and then we'll, we'll come back to this.
Yeah, sixty-five is normal retirement, but it says not less than fifty-five.
That's the S P D.
No, this is, this is the general one.
That's the plan doc?
Normal retirement age shall be age sixty-five, and then in parentheses, not less than fifty-five, nor in excess of sixty-five.
So at sixty-five, you do the twenty-five percent. Not less than fifty-five, you do the ten percent.
Thank you. That may not be what I'm looking at.
Everybody, I mean, you understand? Oh, that means everybody's.
You separate in good standing if, if I resign and move to another place, I'm eligible for ten percent. About whether someone can claim they're retiring.
You need to pick an age for them to get the twenty-five percent, because retirement is not defined, so.
That's what I'm saying. We need to pick a number, pick a number.
Right.
What's the number?
It had to be an age, but it's a service component.
I thought if we pick a number.
And this is the money purchase plan, correct?
Yeah. It's the four oh one A.
This is the four oh one A?
Yep.
We don't have four one K, right? It's four one.
Four oh one A.
I, are you, need more time to think about it, that we just put it on the agenda and bring it forward, or you just pick a number? I mean, I, I don't know what's wrong with fifty-five and ten years of service, as suggested.
Because not everybody is really doing, not, people don't, I mean, unless you're in a town of wealth, or you have.
You're all.
You're retiring at fifty-five.
There was, I, I've just seen it where, and Brian may remember this, at another municipality, there was an employee who was about to be terminated, who qualified for retiree medical. And so they submitted a retirement before we could serve them with the termination papers, and they got retiree medical.
Smart.
Good for them.
And so, to avoid that issue by setting criteria, you can just nip it in the butt.
So what do you recommend?
The, the memo has fifty-five years of age and ten years of service, but either one of those numbers can be modified.
That's the number.
Yeah, it, it does indicate in here sixty-five, no less than fifty-five. I'm fine with fifty-five as well. There's nothing that stipulates early retirement, so.
Okay.
That's what I mean.
Fifty-five and ten years?
Yeah.
Does this change any alignment? It just, it just, you just put it on paper, would it clarify a little bit?
Yeah, again, I think when the provision was written, it was tied to the pension, which had definitive definitions for retirement, so we're just kind of recreating that. I'm sorry?
You're referencing like the police D V plan in here, and you said it's for the town employees, but you have police D V.
Well, no, he just gave, those, those, those are references of what, what it is now. Yeah. For those particular plans. All right, so do I hear a motion that the town council adopt a minimum age of fifty-five years with ten years of service as the definition of retirement?
Yeah, I'll make the mark.
I'll just second.
Get, motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Palladino. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay. Next item is Position Change, Account Clerk One Tax Department.
Everybody mixed one in my office. I know where it is.
Okay.
Did you clean it?
So Rory, you want to get up and explain this one to the council?
Sure. So this came, originated as a request from the union to reevaluate one of their members' position. So currently, in the tax office, we have two employees with the title Account Clerk Two. One is full-time, one is part-time. In the classification plan for the clerical unit, we also have three Account Clerk Ones. Two of them in the finance office, and one in the assessor's office. Two of them in the finance office and one in the assessors' office. So because we got this request, we took a look. None of the account clerk ones are required to be certified. The current full-time account clerk two is certified. She's a certified tax collector. And so the idea was to create a new position, account clerk one tax, which would presumably be filled by the full-time account clerk two as the only internal qualified candidate at an increase of about fifty-five cents an hour, I believe. And then we kind of create parity between the departments, and we modify the job description to require that they either are certified coming on or become certified within a certain period of time, and increases some of the other duties and responsibilities in the office as well.
If I could, the, the point that, that makes me in favor of this is, you know, that the driver for me and what I brought before the Finance Committee is, this is a way to, in the tax collector's office, you know, pursue that succession capacity that the council's policy has been, and certainly I've been pursuing since I've been here. In that, we have somebody who is more of an understudy for the tax collector. We certainly can't make this person an admin. That's a no-go with the unions, obviously. If you're going to move her into an admin post, you lose a union post. They're not going to go for it. But this is a compromised way to achieve essentially the same result. They'd be a union employee, but with the certification, they're able to step in. And the individual that this relates to did step in, as you know. We had a vacancy in the tax collector's office for some time, and they were the principal person who was, was working and filling that gap in that void, so.
Is this supposed to commit MOU between the union and the town?
No, it does not have to be in MOU.
We would create a new position.
Create a position, so if they create a new position, that's in the creative position in the union contract, correct?
It's already, it already exists in the classification plan as account clerk one?
Yeah.
We're not, it's just...
So, and the union agrees to this?
Yeah, the union requested this.
That was a question. So it's already created position in the contract already. It's just one you got to get filled, and you guys are just changing the language a little bit.
Exactly.
Well, well, they don't have the, we don't have account clerk one tax.
Yeah, we're, we're changing...
They're specifying tax department.
Yeah, we're changing this one to be a...
They have an account clerk one.
The way the classification plan...
The union president's already agreed to this, you're saying, right?
Yeah.
So as an account clerk tax one, they're not certified?
As one, they would be certified. Two currently...
Two is not, one is.
And that would be the idea. We're also kind of separating the part-time and full-time positions in the office.
So if we lose, if we change the cert, the, the language, and the account clerk tax one leaves, retires, whatever, and the account clerk tax two, or two tax, wants to take over the one and is not certified...
They can't.
They have to get right.
They, no, the way the job description is written, they don't have to come in certified. They have to become certified within a period of time.
Okay, thank you.
And at Finance, there was also a question as to whether the, our labor attorney has reviewed this in, about past precedent setting, and there is, there is a letter from the attorney in there.
So I remember we discussed that, Finance, we were concerned as well.
Right. And there is a, there is a letter from Chris Hatchison saying that it is not past practice.
Right.
And we can do this without waiting for, because our question was, "Why don't we just negotiate this in their next contract?"
Make sure it was checked.
And that was the answer to it. So. So there is a, there is a motion.
I'll make the motion. The town council of North Branford approved the job description as presented.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Abelson. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next item, police extra duty. First item is administrative charge reimbursements. So this is stemming from what the council had approved several years ago on POCO charges for the, the admin fee that is charged on the invoices.
I don't see it in the scan.
Yeah, I don't, it goes to thirteen N. Let me see once here. It's not in our pocket.
Yeah, we have it. It is thirteen M.
It's thirteen M. The, the document that the mayor provided me today is in your folder, and then...
But that's, that's for the second item. That's for B. The first one is the POCO, is the administrat, administrative charge reimbursements, which was for the high school graduation and...
Twenty-twenty-five festival, yeah.
And, and POCO.
You want to jump out and make copies?
That's the second one.
Yes, so... So. So, we'll, we'll go to the second one, which is in your packet. There's some information. So the second item is police protection at sporting events. So I was talking to the chief, and he has been gracious enough to sit through our whole meeting for this. So, so it is up to the chief of police, and it's at his sole discretion, what sporting events police officers need to be present at, and how many. So in our packet at our desk, there is a spreadsheet that the chief did. This was for last year. And they only had officers at football games and hockey games. So the, the difference is, is that, and I'll ask these questions to Anthony when he comes back. So they're billed, when an officer goes to a sporting event, they are billed with the admin fee, which is around seventy-some percent on top of the police officer's wages. So I would like to propose that we don't charge them the admin fee. Because the admin fee, first of all, for a town department, in charging the admin fee, if it's an officer that is in the defined contribution plan, the admin fee has nothing to do with that officer whatsoever. The pension is automatically, it's paid at a set rate. It's only the officers that are in the defined benefit plan. And they arbitrarily came up with this number, and it keeps going up because the defined benefit plan, every year, the actuarial number changes. So we're up to seventy-two percent.
Which is nuts.
Which is absolutely insane. So for the, there's, there's five things that the council approved back in twenty-two that if there is an admin charge, it gets paid out of the police extra duty account. And it's POCO, the Memorial Day Parade, the tree lighting, graduations. We did not do sporting events at that point in time, but I think we should come back and revisit that and include sporting events so that the schools do not have to pay that admin charge. If they're billed for it, it would get reimbursed through this police overtime account. The police overtime account, from last month when Anthony gave us the numbers, was approximately three hundred thousand dollars in that police overtime account.
Does that affect the police officers who, does that take any money out of their pocket?
No, absolutely zero.
Any way, shape, or form?
I don't want that to happen, no.
No, no.
I mentioned this number some time before, and I was trying to explain everything, what was happening.
Right.
But, and then Rory brought it upon me, and then explained everything to me, that this was coming about from the chief's direction also, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, the officers get their, their contractual rates. There's no loss at, at all to their wages, as far as it goes. It's just, we're double taxing ourselves, and budgets are tight, so.
Okay.
It would help out the, the other departments that would be built.
Wouldn't you state that maybe it even makes it easier for an officer to be hired for an event?
Yeah, I mean, there's always questions when budgets get tight, right? Where can we cut expenses? Right? And that's, you know, police security always comes up as one of those. That's set by statute, by General Statute seven dash two eighty-four, which falls under my office, so. Depending on the sporting event.
Sure.
I decide that.
Does this help in keeping, of hiring the police officers on the town and not going outside of the town to bring in if you needed them?
Yeah, I mean, generally, the, the sporting events are handled by the officers in-town. If there is another event which the state statute covers, then we still have the flexibility to, to hire officers from the outside, depending on what the event is. So you don't, you don't really want to limit yourself there. But this account would have nothing to do with that because it'd be those towns billing us for those services, so we can control that.
So Anthony, the question on the police overtime and the administrative fee, I know this has come up numerous times. But those invoices to, we'll just focus on town groups.
Okay.
Okay, POCO, sporting events, public works, wherever the case may be, where we need an officer. Those invoices are generated by us, by our, your department, after the fact, after the police officer has been paid.
Correct.
So you know the police officer that took the job, did the extra duty, and whether they're in the DB or the DC plan, correct?
Correct.
So why, if on a sport, let's take a sporting event. You have two officers, they're both DC. Why would we charge them the administrative fee for...
Because we have the, there's one extra duty rate.
Yeah.
It's not bifurcated between DB and DC people. It's, it's an extra duty rate that's spelled out in the contract. It says, this is the, it's, it's, it's just, it's just one extra duty rate. We, we can make split rates, again, as we get to the point now where the, the count is becoming more DC versus DB. We can do a, an average of the, the zero and the, and the fifty or sixty of everything.
Well, well, these invoices that were just generated for POCO for this year.
Yep.
It, the, the extra charge is totally separate. It's not part of the rate.
Correct.
Yeah, because it's...
So why would you charge that if it's a DC person?
Because they're not coded, even though we know that.
Yes, they are!
No, but we're not coding them in the, in the billing system.
In the billing, exactly. And in the payroll, they're counted as a DB/DC, but in the billing for the extra duty, there's one extra duty code.
There's just one code to it, no matter what.
Right.
We can rule code it.
Well, they're coded, right? I, I see their names on the invoice, so what do you mean they're not coded?
No, in, in the billing system, it does not code. So we would have to stipulate in the billing system for extra duty.
Right.
The differentiation. Yes, it's coded as who the person is. So yes, you can essentially do that, do the extra manual work on it, which should be done. I think we should probably do that. Obviously, that's why it hasn't been done.
Well, you're, you're charging, you're charging town departments an enormous fee.
Correct.
That doesn't even, like, if it's, if it's a, if it's a DC person, someone in the defined contribution plan that goes and does the sporting event, you're charging way on top, and they're getting no benefit. They, they, they aren't getting that in their pension.
Right.
We're charging, I don't know what the rate is now. It's up to seventy-some percent.
Seventy-two.
This information Jimmy gave us from last year, the chief, this is at sixty-four percent. So as you can see from here, last year, just in the sporting events, the, the savings to the town or to the Board of Ed would be approximately five thousand dollars by not charging them the, the admin fees at all, and just charging...
But if it's a DB person, though, then you have to charge the admin fees.
Yeah, but then, then we can come back and do it, add...
Reimburse.
Add it to the category that we take it out of. It would come before us to approve to take it out of the police extra duty fund.
Yes.
Is there a different rate for different... What's that? Is there a different rate for different things that you do in town? In other words, I mean, I'm looking at the rate...
Is it nonprofit rate, yeah?
For POCO? And then I'm looking for, I'm looking at the rate...
That's, that's set by the, their CBA has a specific rate set for POCO.
Right, and this rate is higher?
Yeah.
So is this the rate going forward?
Because there is an exemption in the CBA specifically for POCO at a rate. It was a negotiation between the union and the town.
So is, is, because there's, is, is the Sunday rate higher than the other rate?
Not for security. Uh, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Only...
I'm jumping between the two here, yeah. So if you're talking sporting events, it comes under a security rate. That's a set number per their CBA. For POCO, there's, it's defined, depending on the days, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
That was negotiated last contract.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so I would like to suggest that we... I mean, I, I guess to keep it simple for the person that does the invoices, if there's a set rate and it includes the ridiculous admin fee, then everything would come back to us to approve so that they don't pay the admin fee for, for sporting events.
I think the best way to look at it is, the money that's in the police extra duty fund is being generated, for the most part, by outside vendors.
Correct.
That the officers are going to work. So even the money that you're, if you were to elect to extract it to cover these funds that were normally being charged to the, let's just say, the Board of Education, we use them as an example. They're really not being funded by the town. They're being funded by the officers working the extra duty jobs that are getting paid by outside vendors.
Right.
So if, possibly looking at it that way, it's a no cost to the town, but it keeps the money in the pocket of the town departments because money is valuable when you have tight budgets and things that we've gone through, so.
Yes.
If that makes it a little bit clearer.
Yes. So, so I would like to propose that we add high school sporting events to the list of...
I agree.
Items where the police extra duty fund can come before us to get reimbursed for the admin fee that is charged on there. And I would like it effective at the beginning of the school year, so to go back, you know.
Retroactive.
I think, I think they only had one football game so far.
Yeah.
On there, but retroactive to the beginning of school, August twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-five.
I agree with that.
On there.
So this is the suggested motion here?
No, that is, that's POCO. That's the second, that's the second item. There is, there is not one for POCO. There's not one for the sporting events.
We can...
We're just going to add it. The easiest thing is just to add it.
The motion is to add athletic events in the town of North Branford to the exemption, exemption list?
The reimbursement for, of admin.
Exemption of admin, yeah.
The only department in town that's really affected by it would be Department of Public Works when they do their roadwork, their bridge work, the things of those natures, so. I just threw that up there, yeah.
So if you want to add both of them?
We should have Public Works do it. They don't...
It's the same concept. We, it gets, you know, the officer gets paid, it gets billed to them. The rate gets added on, and then is it a higher charge coming out of the same town department?
Let's say the same officer at...
That's separate. They, they bill the town. That's, yeah.
Okay, so this would, can we, we could, if we add that, should we stipulate that specifically to a North Branford officer being utilized?
This is all North Branford officers.
Yeah, it doesn't matter anyway because that, that bill is being generated, so we have no control over that anyway.
Okay, all right, I understand.
So do you want to...
All right, so I will amend my motion to also indicate Public Works, I guess, roadwork? Or, or, it's just Public Works officer need?
Yes.
You can clean that up and make it done.
So the, the motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Goad. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go back to a administrative charge reimbursement. So this, this is, we did this at the last meeting, and it was for POCO twenty-four.
Correct. This is twenty-four, twenty-five?
And this is twenty-five. This is, this is, just so that we can get it all done, and it's not sitting out there for so long. So this is, this takes into account the administrative charge for POCO for the twenty-five POCO, and it also includes the high school graduation this past year in June. And it also includes the high school graduation this past year in June, because that is one of the events also.
All right, so. We hereby resolve that North Branford Town Council instructs the Treasurer or Finance Director to transfer eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents from the police extra duty fund as follows, eleven thousand three hundred and seventy-nine point zero-three to the Potato Festival Fund, Fund Two Eight Seven Two for the administrative piece of the two thousand twenty-five Potato Festival extra duty invoice and three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents from the police extra duty fund to the General Fund, Fund One Thousand for the administrative piece of the two thousand twenty-five NBHS graduation extra duty invoices.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Abelson. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Next item is approval of twenty-five, twenty-six through thirty, thirty-one capital improvement plan because the eight twenty-four was returned from planning and zoning.
The final step in the CIP process, they have the memo from Dave Perkins that Planning and Zoning favorably voted to approve it. So, and they just, it puts it to bed.
We hereby resolve that North Branford Town Council adopts the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six through two thousand thirty, thirty-one capital improvement plan pursuant to the favorable review by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second. Motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Do you have a copy of the CIP in our plan or not? In our, no.
No.
Okay, I just have a question in regards to how it was handled for the paving project for TVES because there was two hundred thousand dollars under fund balance, which was from our original budget.
Right.
Hearings. And then the additional approximately ninety-five thousand dollars because we had cut fifty thousand that was originally there. So what category is that ninety-five thousand dollars under?
It's in other funding, and I think I had referenced it in my, in my memo just above the suggested motion. The only outstanding item relates to the funding for the TVS paving project, namely if the Board of Education is going to allocate some funds towards a ninety-five thousand dollar shortfall. I have not heard.
Right, because they have not taken any action on it yet at all. So, so under that other funding column, does that?
Closed out capital project funds on our side. But I could certainly wait until they act and.
Well, no, I, I don't want to hold up any of the other things that are on the capital plan and prevent paying anything else if we don't approve this tonight.
All right, I, I can move the ninety-five from the closed capital project. If they come forward with money, we'll just reimburse those, that pot of money. We can make it work.
Okay, but other funding, would that include Board of Ed funds? Like with, under that, under that heading?
Yeah, it could certainly include that, yes.
So that ninety-five thousand, is it all closed out capital projects?
Well, that's what I'm saying, you, you're saying you want to move it forward. So I'm saying I'll take the whole ninety-five from closed capital projects. If they come forward with money, we can just put that money back where that money came from. Or do you want to hold off?
Well, I don't know, because I, I don't remember any motions coming before us closing out capital projects and, and going, and reassigning them to a project. So don't we have to do that?
Right, you will. At that next meeting, you'll have the motion to, to close it out, to move the money in accordance with this. But I was, again, it's that chicken and the egg, what's going to come first? Are they going to, we're going to put the whole ninety-five from other closed out projects? Or do you want to wait until they come forward with money and then do the balance?
Well, our next meeting, their board meeting is before our next council meeting. So we can see if they take any action at their.
Okay.
October meeting. So right now, we can just keep it under.
Other funding.
Other funding, because that encompasses Board of Ed.
Correct.
Correct?
You are correct.
All right, and then, and then this takes care of the shortfall, Robin Lane, so we can take care of all that payment and everything?
This week, yes.
Okay, all right. Does anyone else have any other questions in regards to this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay, financial report for August thirty-first.
Financial report, it's two months into the year, it's very, very not meaningful numbers. Tax collections, just about on target with prior year, fifty-two change, total revenue forty-four and a half, forty-four point nine last year. Again, just about identical. On the expenditure side of the House, you'll notice some, some funkiness, that top line, that consolidated cost center. This was an attempt that we're trying to hopefully streamline a lot of the processes. And it's still a work in progress. There's some items that are in there that may not be living in there permanently. We're just trying to figure out what makes the most sense to kind of streamline the whole approval process and, and get it up there. That's why that number is showing way over expended, because again, there's a lot of items that are, we're trying to figure out what's going to end up in that department versus in where it lived forever. Again, just trying to figure out a way to streamline the system. You notice the street lighting on halfway down too is showing, you know, five hundred and ninety, five hundred and eighty-nine percent over expended. Street lighting is one of the things that got moved up to that consolidated cost center. So some of the items that are in there don't belong there, they belong in the top section. So it's going to be, this is a, a year of transition where we're moving things around. And bottom line, it's going to be good, but there might be some bumps along the road as far as how we allocate certain things. But we're working to, again, to make things easier and expedite the process and streamline things. In total, the report's unremarkable. There's nothing really, at ten, two months into the year, it's nothing earth shattering yet.
So how come under mayor and council amount encumbered is a negative amount? Everything else is. It's the only one that's, the second line from the top.
Yeah.
I don't know how you get a negative encumbrance.
Yeah, that's a, it's a neat trick. I'll get an answer for you.
Okay.
So do we have a list of anything that's overextended in department budgets? Like for each department, do we have anyone that's over budget or anything, less than you know?
Do you want anything that's over expended is, is that top number, that consolidated cost center? Again, that's just, that's a, we tried to lump things like cell phones, electricity, things that are really non-discretionary items into that department. And again, it's, it's still kind of a, a topic we're trying to refine.
So we don't have a list of overextended budgets?
Negative, there's nothing over expended, just that one number, but it's not truly over expended because it's, again, it's just trying to get a hang. Not everybody.
Okay. Next item is appropriation transfer.
Just a, trying to go through the numbers at the end of June, wrapping up loose ends, trying to get the, we gave departments till the end of September to get all their POs closed out and everything else, trying to expedite the closing process. So I went through all the departments and made some transfers to clean things up. Some of the larger ones you'll see on there. Like the fifth. I went in and did that item we talked about with the police, on the very last page, I'm sorry. The balance of the DB money was a hundred and forty-five. So that's going to be transferred out towards the pension fund to help offset the low funding. Some of the other big items on that last page, twenty-five thousand, the self-insurance deductibles, they're budgeted in the insurance department, but they function as an operating transfer out, moving the budget. The ambulance subsidy, again, we budget in the ambulance department. Truly, it's an operating transfer out, moving the budget to coincide with that. Some small work that recreation had done by Park, by Public Works, moving the money to cover that. And again, same thing that the bottom one there, recreation and central services, both of those had some work done by Fran, and this just moves the money to, to cover those.
So I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So you have money being moved into pensions, when does that money get moved if we approve it?
It'll get moved, uh, this week.
Right away or?
Yeah. I'll have it wired.
I'm sorry?
I'll, I'll have it wired this week.
This week?
So this, this is actually an additional payment into the DB.
That's what I wanted, because you know, if you say.
The sooner you bake it, yes.
Make it later, then you're losing.
Investment, yep.
Yeah.
Investment stuff.
Yeah, now that you guys have, have approved the transfer, or will approve the transfer.
So that, that brings up a question I had too.
Yes.
And now, but earlier we were talking about that, the statewide money for the seventeen hundred dollars, where's that being deposited? From the CSP, from the state police?
The opioid, opioid.
Yeah, the opioid, yep.
Yep, it's in the reserve fund, there's an opioid pot in the reserve fund.
It goes back, Jimmy said that he would, it would go back into the opioid fund. So the opioid fund, we're taking money out, we approve money to go towards salary of the officer. And then the months that we get money back, the seventeen hundred dollars, right now Jimmy said that he would put that seventeen hundred back into the opioid fund.
That's where it's going to be deposited?
That's where it comes in, yeah, it's wired from the state into us and then it gets deposited right into.
That doesn't show nothing on here for that though.
No, opioid, that's a separate fund.
Okay.
This is just a general fund you have in front of you.
What is the huge credit to workman's compensation? It's a hundred and ten thousand.
Oh, yeah, that was.
Well, you recall last year, there was the issue where our agent looks at things in total and the insurance account was over expended for a good portion of last year. And it was just a matter of the budgeting, he budgeted the, between the workers' comp, he counts it as one, as bet, as insurance. We break it up between the insurance department and the benefits where workers' comp lives. That's why there was a huge save, there was the over expenditure last year on this side, on the insurance, and it was a savings on the workers' comp. He looks at it as one number, our agent, but we budget it separately between the insurance department, which is where the property and casualty and automobile lives, everything else that was over expended most of last year. And the savings was on this side, on the, so we, we budget it versus how the insurance broker.
But, but they're all separate policies, they're all broken down.
He, he prices it, he kind of gets the numbers and looks at it as one. Overall, it's year over year, it was a savings, year twenty-four, five versus three, four. So he was happy that we had savings, but we showed it the opposite way. We showed that we were over expended all last year in the insurance.
Well, it could be savings depending on what he puts in for workman's comp salaries and the rates that you're getting and your experience mod.
Our, our experience mod, you, another point that was mentioned was historically, we were rated with the Board of Ed. We had one pool for workers' comp. They split out, and we had our safety meeting last, last Wednesday.
Yeah.
And our claims have been really, really good. So you're a hundred percent on target, our, our mod rate and everything else has been favorable. That's why we have the savings on workers' comp.
But.
Number of claims is low and the, the mod rate has been reduced.
But have we been audited yet on our workman's comp policy?
We have not audited twenty-four, five, we were just.
Does the, does the policy year run the same as our fiscal year?
Yeah.
On there?
Yeah, fiscal year.
Okay.
So we have not, they have not audited twenty-four, five yet, no.
Okay. All right, and, well, I, I see there's a huge deposit for retirement contribution DB. What plan is, what is that for? Most of that credit for workman's comp is going towards retirement contribution DB. So what did we under budget?
I think, I see what you're saying, a hundred and seven?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that, I mean that.
I think it might have been a coding between the, who's DB and who's DC, but I can give the answer to that one for you too.
I mean, because that, that looks like a budget error.
Yeah.
That we were short a hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Right.
In, in DB.
Right. I'll get an answer on that one and the other issue about the negative encumbrance.
Is ambulance subsidy.
That's the one we vote every year. That's, that's what we, on the ambulance subsidy.
Yeah, we budgeted in the ambulance department to show the expense of running the ambulance, our contribution, but it actually is an operating transfer out to the ambulance fund. That's why we've been moving the budget down to how it actually lives in life.
Okay.
So do I have a motion to approve the appropriation transfers?
All motion is stipulated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion for the appropriation transfers was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Abelson. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. And the next item is early voting grant.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is a late add and it's for us to approve receiving a ten thousand fifty-six dollars seven cent early voting grant from the state of Connecticut, which is required to be sent back to the state, our approval by September thirtieth.
And, and what does this pay for? What, what is it used for, Lisa?
It's for the registrar voters and like the last one we received last year, we have a choice of what we can use it for. They gave you certain categories, so I put every single category on this so that the registrars can choose. It can go for supplies, equipment, salaries, anything to do with early voting though.
Oh, okay.
It's only the early voting days.
Oh, okay.
So, but early voting ballots, the salaries, any equipment we use. If we, if we had to do a maintenance for one of the tabulators, we could put that in. Supplies, everything, I put everything in there so they can pick and choose what they use, but it has to cover only the early voting days.
Okay, and so what would you, this ten thousand dollars we're getting from the state, what would you say, what percentage of our early voting does that cover?
That I wouldn't know, I'd have to ask the registrars that.
Oh, okay, I was just wondering, I, I don't know how much early voting costs us.
Right, and they have those figures.
Okay.
Then they would have to submit a report, so we keep a separate, I have them keep a separate account and a spreadsheet.
Okay, we can get that after early voting is done for this year.
I can get you, last year's when we used it, and I can also, yes, get, get it this year because they have to submit an expenditure report to the state of Connecticut.
Okay, that's fine. All right, thank you. All right, there is a suggested motion.
That the Town Council of North Branford, the Town North Branford authorizes Town Manager Michael P. Downs to execute any and all documents necessary to receive early voting grants from the Secretary of State.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Goad. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay, citizens' statements and petitions.
Father Norton, I have a quick question, maybe Anthony and maybe you can, Franny can answer. When the ambulance barn was built, it was not meant to be occupied, right? It was a toned, toned response, I believe, was that the?
Volunteer at that time, yeah.
So again, the building was never meant to be used as heavily as it is now. I think we have to really look hard, get that thing back up. I mean, the guys are doing a wonderful job. That ambulance, both ambulances and even the third one sometimes are going twenty-four, seven. Now, we had a probably projected life expectancy on the original thought about that building. It sounds like we far exceeded it. It sounds like the building's aging quicker than we probably realized. And again, I think we have to prepare for that in the future. So I think you really have to look at the building, which was never meant to be occupied, only, you know, it's just like the firehouses. A tone goes out and the people respond and roll the ambulance. Now it's staff twenty-four, seven, with, I don't know, six, eight people on staff at all times.
Four.
Four people.
Two crews, yeah.
And so again, I think as you look at the expenses for this building, look hard and fast and say, well, is this a patch job? Or is this going to extend the life of this building? Because we need the building, we need the service. You've identified a lot of deficiencies. Now it's time to really knuckle under and get the building back up into a better shape because we're using a part-time billing, twenty-four, seven now. And we got to look at it and, and see what's got to be done. So again, yes, money's being put in maybe, but don't patch it up, fix it up and make it a twenty-four, seven billing for the safety crews. Now, the question was, how do you know when, what the retirement age is? Well, I can tell you from experience, when you retire, your honey-do list goes from weekends and nights to twenty-four, seven. That's how you know what the retirement age is. And again, I want to thank you all. You know, we've got one more. And again, I want to thank you all, you know, we've got one more meeting to get through, however you want to say it, you've done a wonderful job, I'm proud of this town, I love this town, and, I mean, you guys, you give it all, and probably, and I really am sad to see the, the trash talk you guys all had to endure, when all you were doing is what you have to do, budget the town, and you've done it, again, successfully, I think other towns could learn from us, and thank you for all you do, thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen's statements? Okay, there will be no executive session, we already took care of that matter on there, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Captain.
Thank you, everyone.